Okay, we are past 8:30 and we have a tight agenda, so I want to get started as soon as possible.
On her way.
Okay. Well, I think just in the effort of time, we'll start. So, welcome to our official monthly work session, March 22nd, dated March 22nd, 8:30. First up is the Financial Advisory Committee Report, John Krainer. Welcome.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. Thank you for being here.
Opportunity to present our work to you and seek your focus on us and let us continue. The key findings of the Financial Advisory Committee. Responsibilities are to monitor and report the finances of the school system, to take into consideration educational quality measures, financial management of the school and its budgets, and the operating and capital budgets. We review and recommend those to the board. The key roles are to provide community oversight for the sales tax and voted millage. And last I looked, that's probably about $65 million a year, as required by our referendum. And thank you all for your support of the referendum as a citizen. We're delighted to have that kind of 78% endorsement. So, thanks. Financial condition of the school system and evaluation of the budgeting and spending. We are charged with monitoring good business practices, and thankfully, with this board, we do not have a tough duty to do that. We are sounding board for you for policy and to provide recommendations to the superintendent and staff as requested. And the real issue that we wrestle with is what do we get for what we spend? If you turn to, I guess, page four, funding of all sources, the ad lorem taxes are obviously the biggest piece of the funding for the school system. Second is the state of Florida. But very importantly is the millage initiative, which is almost 10% of the budget. So, if you take that and the sales tax, we're looking at almost 15% of the budget and almost $65 million a year. So, we oversee that piece of the school operating budget. The impact of the voted millage, as you can see, is a detailed analysis. The question we wrestle with for you is what new school needs and what costs, and how can we ensure that we get the best money for the value, or the best value for the money? And then the question of how much student aid comes from the state, and how do we access that through the superintendent and the staff? Again, voted millage is $56 million going forward. In terms of educational quality...
Let me stop you real quick. Are we on page four? We're on page five?
Five.
Okay. I just wanted clarity when I was looking at that, those numbers and the breakdown. So, it has the capital on the first chart.
Right.
So, let's just move to 17, 18. The 91.9, is that the 1.5 discretionary? Where is the 91.9 coming?
That is the capital budget for schools and buildings and structures for the school system.
Okay.
It would be, I guess, Todd, you may have a better handle on this, but it's the building of schools, the maintenance of schools, et cetera. It's the capital action of the board for new facilities primarily, or enhanced facilities, as the case may be.
You're talking about...
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. I'll keep going.
Okay. In terms of educational quality, we are one of two A-rated districts in the state of Florida. As you can see, we have 92% A or B elementary schools, 75% middle schools, and 71% A or B schools. I asked Todd at the last meeting why we weren't as high on high and middle schools as we are on elementary schools, and he assured us that it's not a function of quality, but a function of quantity, as much as anything. So, going to educational quality, we have state reading and Sarasota reading, and state math and Sarasota math, and got a lot of Xs and Os and dots and dashes here, but the basic notion here is that our school system ranks substantially above the state on every measure. And despite changes to the formula that have taken place in recent years, you can see the bars here in 2011 and 2015 where the state mandated different metrics for us, but we still maintain about a 20-point difference between our school system and the state system. In terms of student achievement, you look at 2001, and we were at total 58%. Today, we're at 66%, so a substantial improvement. Our white students were at 63 and are currently at 73, again, a substantial improvement. Black students in 2001 were, in my judgment, woefully underserved with 24%. We are now up to 36%, and I would add a personal note that I think that our school system deserves better than we deliver in that area, and I would urge you to take all necessary steps to move that up.
Agreed, and that stood out to us. Mr. Robinson or Eric?
You can call me Eric, it's fine. I want to get to that part, is that the blacks went up, but they went up with the state. We are equal with the state, and yet every other metric, we happen to do better than the state.
Right.
It makes me think that there's something that we're doing wrong with serving that area of the community. And I don't know if it's because we have a tendency to treat everybody equal, not recognize that maybe we need some differential learning for this demographic. I don't know if there's a culture of low expectations. I don't know if it's a funding issue, but clearly, it's an area that we keep talking about, but we don't do anything about. And I hear us talking a lot about things like, you know, the vouchers, corporate tax scholarships, charter schools. If you want to, I know we do a lot of stuff going up to Tallahassee to talk about that, but if we want to get it so that people aren't using those programs, we need to improve this demographics. We need to make it so that they want to come at our school. We need to make sure that we're fulfilling their need, and having these numbers, we're not doing that. We are woefully falling down on the job. So, you know, Dr. Bowden, what do you have to say about that?
So, when you disaggregate out that data, if you look at...
For the record, this is something Dr. Bowden and I talk about in private. This isn't a surprise.
And I'll provide this to you all electronically, but what I asked our research assessment and evaluation to do is to break it down by grade level, and there is a very clear distinction in the data. When you look at grade three reading, and when you say that we need to provide an increased focus, we have intensely focused on grade three reading through the National Campaign for Grade Level Reading, our investments in reading recovery, what we're doing at our Title I elementary schools, and we are seeing tangible results there. What you see is that 45.2%, well above the district average and well above the state average of our African-American students, are reading at grade level.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's 45.2% in fourth grade.
And what's the state average for third grade?
39.9.
So, fourth grade is 45?
Correct.
Do you have a copy of that for anyone?
Actually, I just received it this morning. I'll forward it out to you electronically so that you see it. But there's a very clear distinction in the data, which is in grades three, four, five, and six, we outperform the state average. In grades seven, eight, nine, and 10, we underperform. So, what we can clearly say is that our investments in elementary school are paying off, that we now need to focus on middle and high school. One of the reasons you focus on elementary school is that, you know, when we talk about reading recovery, when you return a student to grade level, they maintain that grade level throughout their reading. So, you'll see the impact of elementary school programs in middle and high school, but that doesn't absolve us of responsibility of those students who didn't have the benefit of the things that we're currently doing in elementary school. But there is a clear distinction in the data. I mean, it's a clear shift that in the primary grades, our African-American students are outperforming their peers around the state, but from grade seven on, they are underperforming.
Well, my question is, is I would expect every demographic to improve better than the state, despite almost the mere fact of osmosis, that your student in Sarasota County usually performed better than the state. So, my question is, is that additional differential, is that due to what we're doing for people on average, or is that because of these additional programs? And so, when I look at the total, you know, you can always pick out data points that are above and below, but the question is, is when we consistently, year after year, every time we get the support, it's the same thing, year after year. And year after year, we bring this up, and then we kind of forget about it, put it on the shelf. I mean, I remember Frank Kovak talking about it. I mean, there's got to be a certain point where we don't put it on the shelf, and we have discussions, and we don't wait a year to have discussion again.
Well, it's clearly not on the shelf. There are 20 different committees working solely on this issue. I mean, and you've had updates from them at every board workshop. And so, when we talk about closing the achievement gap, when we talk about the lowest quartile, that is the focus of our curriculum department, that is the focus of our principals, and we are seeing tangible results.
If I may interject, though, I think to that point is that we, year after year, find this one area, and I look forward to seeing that breakdown because it's more granular. And if it isn't on the shelf, or if it's continually be focused on whatever we're doing isn't working, so I think we need to take a deeper dive, that will be helpful to see. And I don't know if there's been conversations about moving into the next year, what is our action plan that's different from what we were doing last year? Did you have some, Shirley?
Yes. Well, one thing that I know, that if those numbers are 45% now, and we've only had the summer learning academies in effect at certain schools, and I think when we show that we're expanding it to the other schools, I think that'll help, because how long has Emma Booker had it?
Emma Booker, yet has a third-grade class that has the benefit of having been in a summer learning academy since kindergarten, so it is bubbling up. We've yet to see the results of reading recovery. This year, we'll have our first group of reading recovery students tested on a state assessment. So, our third graders are the first group that had reading recovery as first graders.
And it's a follow-up of that. I think it comes back to where I was talking about, where we need to look at our district boundaries for elementary schools in North Sarasota County, so that every child that wants to have advantage of those summer reading programs and be in a school in their neighborhood can. But I think we also have to take it a step further when we're looking at those and letting the kids stay in their neighborhood schools, but also have an overlay so that if they want to go to another school out of their district in this area, that we provide the busing for them to go out of their, you know, in a selected area in this region. I think that's a step forward that will help us. Plus, it'll empower the parents to be more effective, because I checked with the principals of some of these schools, and the performance of their black students in their schools are the same as what they are in Emma's. So, they're not performing better. And in fact, I think once we see the results of our summer learning, they may actually be performing less than what they're going to. So, I really want to continue on that avenue and look at that, because I think that might be an area where we also can more effectively provide the services that are needed to help these children move on.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Moving on to math, it's the same story generally, but a little better performance in the math area than we have in the reading area. And I want to thank you for your attention to this opportunity that we have in our community. So, thanks very much for that. In terms of our student achievement, SAT scores are above state and national averages by a fairly substantial difference. We are at combined 1,130, and Florida is about 120 points behind us. If you look at national, we're still a good 60, 70 points ahead of the national level. So, on an objective basis, we have a strong performing school system. SAT scores likewise are above state and national averages, and they continue to grow, if you will. At one point, you look at 12 and 13, we were up 33 points. Now, we're up 59 points, 60 points. That continues to be a bright spot. In terms of student achievement, graduation rates are above the state of Florida. The dropout rates, for the first time since I've been on the board here, or the committee, we actually are higher than, on dropout rates than we have been. And so, we bring that to your attention.
Yeah, and I think that all caught us by guard. You want to say something, Caroline?
Is there a reason for that? Because that's the one that caught me, because I've been scrutinizing the dropout rates, and it's normally 1%. So, it's really come up, are we focusing more on the students, expelling the students, or what is happening?
Well, if you look at the data from Project 10, expulsions are down, graduation rates are up, but that's something that we have to focus on, is that exactly what's going on with the dropout rate percentage, making sure that we track those. The agreement that we entered into with the acceleration academies will certainly help provide another strategy, but the Project 10 data allows us to put a name on that and clearly understand. What I'm having difficulty doing is drawing a clear pattern at the district level. If you talk to our principals, they can tell you the story of each one of those students. What's difficult at the district is to figure out, is there a pattern and some action required at the district? Or is that, really, those are individual stories, and is that something that you work with at the school level? So, that's kind of where we're at, is that Project 10 has provided us phenomenal information. Now, it's about harnessing it and using it to make some sort of actionable decision.
I also know it's the cohort. So, the cohort you come in with in ninth grade, that's what's judged on 12th grade, but in between there, there's like Owen graduated in three years.
Right.
So, he's not part of his cohort. So, I mean, we have tons of stories of that, too, and some kids take a year longer. So, I know that it's not all just cut and dry, but to see this go from 1% to 3% was a little disconcerting for me.
Yeah, and so, those are students who have exited our system. A student who takes an extra year is not shown as a dropout, but they're not shown as a graduate, so they're not in that rate. And that's where we frequently have to educate the public, which is graduation rate plus dropout rate will never equal 100%, because it's about, exactly as you said, very astute, is the cohorts. And so, a student who graduates in three years counts as graduating with his cohort. A student who graduates in four years, but a student who exits to a GED or takes a fifth year does not show as a graduate. But the dropout number, those have exited our system and did not re-enroll in another system, which is part of the data that we try to track down, as if they say, I'm leaving here and moving to live with my father in North Carolina. Did they arrive in North Carolina and enroll? If they don't, then they're a dropout to us.
So, we're tracking that?
We are. We are.
Eric.
After the horrible instances at Parkland, we're having a heightened look at mental health issues, troubled kids. We're taking every instance very seriously. I got to think that that's somehow or another going to affect suspension and expulsion at some point, when some kids creating safety issues at the school. Is that correct? I mean, is it reasonable to assume that a suspension expulsion rate will go up because we're getting tougher and not be as lenient on these instances?
One of the stories that, or lessons learned that comes out of Parkland is that student was expelled, but expelling a student from your school community doesn't make your school safer. And so, I think there's an increased awareness of if there's an expulsion, where is the handoff to some community organization? Where's the handoff? Is that you just can't say you're unfit to be part of our community, and we're going to expel you from it, because it doesn't make you safer, and it clearly doesn't serve the student. And so, you're always going to have the push and pull of, we need more law enforcement, we need a higher suspension, we need to take a tougher stand with our students, but at the same time, if you don't address the underlying mental concerns, which I think is where you started, you're not making your school safer by simply sending them home or expelling them.
So hypothetically, we have somebody that we deem not to be a security risk, that this person is likely to, you know, cause risk at our school. You're saying that we would not, what type of steps would you take as a superintendent once that person has been identified to you?
Typically, we would remove them from a traditional school setting, and we would attempt to serve them in some other way. The flexibility of virtual programs, but to maintain some sort of connection to the student, once you break the tie with the student, they become an unknown. And so, developing the ability to hand that student off to other organizations, making sure that there's still engagement. You don't want to lose track of those students, particularly if you've identified them as unsafe, unstable, a potential threat. Simply removing them from your community and breaking ties with them actually just puts an unknown out there, whereas if you maintain some level of relationship, you know and have the ability to keep tabs on them. So, virtual programs are a great option. We do homeschool. We've sent teachers to engage with students, particularly those that have ESC classification.
But that relationship would not include them being around other kids at our schools? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is absolute, once we determine that they are a threat to that community, but the answer is not expulsion. So, removing them from a traditional school setting, yes. Completely breaking ties with that student, no.
Let me interrupt real quickly, and then Jane, I'll go to you, but I just want to say, I want to be able to get through this, but all of it has elevated some very, very important conversations, so I'm taking notes as follow-up workshops as it relates to focusing on the dropout and expulsion rate, but I want to be able to get to the rest of your presentation. Jane, go ahead.
Well, just a quick thought, and this may be something that we can follow up on. I will definitely follow up on this myself, but, you know, this dropout rate, I want to know how that equates to unaccompanied youth, poverty, and homelessness. And I think Ellen McLaughlin has a lot of those details, and I'm going to be talking to her in the near future, because I think this may be affecting some of these numbers as well. And it is of great concern. And again, that's that connection that we're not making. We have these youth that are really unaccompanied, they're not on anybody's radar as much as possibly they should. They sleep wherever they can, they go home with friends, but they're kind of going under the radar. Ellen is identifying a number of them, but we need to make connections and help these students. This is where mentoring would become a really important aspect for these students.
Go ahead. Excuse me. I do not see us just discarding students and putting them out of school because they have a problem. I see us getting them mental health services, because I don't think it's our job to throw a kid out of school because he has a problem.
Right, and again, I think this is a much, very necessary and high priority conversation, but I also want to be cognizant of your time as well.
May I put an explanation point on that conversation?
If we can, yes, and then we'll move forward.
Yes. So, the state has allocated to Sarasota County a million dollars, a million dollars that as part of our budget process, we have simply just walled off. And so, a separate conversation about what do we do with that money and how are we impactful will need to take place. And so, in your budget, we have just parked that million dollars in contracted services. We have the ability, if we decide to hire staff, to move it into the budget or to partner with organizations. And so, not only do we need to have a workshop, but we do have resources available to be impactful.
I know we do.
An immediate, I mean, a high priority conversation, I completely understand. Thank you, Mr. Krainer, if you'd like to continue.
Thank you. Being a part of your conversation, at least from the listening standpoint. In terms of educational quality, a summary, we rank second in the state of Florida. As you all know, St. John's has a bit of an edge with regard to their population and their educational experience there. We rank fourth in math, fifth in science, and I would guess that, given the nature of our community, we want to move those up and not let them sit where they are. Moving to the economic side of the equation, the voted millage investments have been substantial over the last five years, and the details are, as you see on page 14. Charter school financial support, I know, has been a political issue from throughout the state. We clearly engage in that, and that has been a benefit for our community. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, other than to say, if you look at page 15, we have bounced around with regard to unassigned fund balances, as high as almost 19%, as low as about 8%. The state is at 3. We have technically a target of seven and a half. We have not breached that ever. And I think that Todd and the administration is tightening that as we go forward, so that we don't get quite the ups and downs that we have in the past, although they have been very well served. In terms of capital investments, we have in the past used COPS as a funding mechanism. It was prudent and productive for us. Our bond rating is double A across the board. We reinstated the impact fees. I think we did that in Venice, if I'm not mistaken.
2015.
And our total capital investment for 2007 to 17 is a billion and a quarter dollars. So, this is a very large enterprise that you oversee.
Shirley.
When you say the use of COPS was prudent and productive, what did you use to come up with that conclusion?
We actually engaged a consultant and asked them to give us a look at COPS and non-COPS, and we were able to get a better rate with certificates of participation than we were in the open market, so.
When did you do that?
That was in 19, 2007, I think, 2008, if I remember correctly. 10, was it 10? Okay.
Okay.
I have a hard time keeping track of...
No problem, no. Completely understand. Don't worry.
But you didn't look into, that was just the cost of it, you didn't look into and factor in the savings that we had by using those dollars while the economy was down, and we reduced the cost of a lot of, or was that part of the...
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Our charter school impact started, if you look at 2007, 2008, we had about 5% of enrollment in charter schools. That grew fairly substantially through 2013, 14, and has basically flattened out in the last four or five years. And I know that that's an area of scrutiny that this board pursues. Our point of view is that that is your decision, not our financial decision, that you can choose to engage with that or not.
Eric.
This is a wackadoo suggestion I'm going to come up with, but this is what I'd like for the Financial Advisory Board to take... I'd like for the Financial Advisory Board to tackle. We keep having charter schools come up and they're wanting to place their charter schools in places that aren't advantageous for us. And yet, we have certain parts of the county that are highly overcrowded, and we're looking at spending a lot of money and capital to have to build schools, to get the infrastructure to do the overcrowding. This is a wackadoo thing, so I'm just prefacing with that.
We're a wackadoo group.
Yeah, I used to be part of the group. What about us looking at doing some sort of incentive program to get the, if a charter school's gonna come, okay, why don't we, why don't we give them incentive to put their charter schools in a place that makes sense? So, instead of us spending $30 million to try to relieve overcrowded in Ashton, what happens if we gave them some incentive? Obviously, much, much less than $30 million. That's not what, that's really wackadoo. I'm not saying that. But if we gave them some sort of incentive to set up their charter school in a place that's overcrowded, so that we save money on having to put the capital dollars to relieve the overcrowded?
Shirley.
I'm not saying to actually do it, but just explore it, is how much, what the Financial Advisor Committee thinks that that would be. I mean, if we could do it with just, you know, a million dollars saves us 30, kinda makes sense. I don't know what the number would be, but I know that, that other government entities provide incentives to bring people in. And I'm not saying for us to give incentives to bring charters in, but if they're already, they're already coming to do applications, why would we want them to go up in the northern part where it's saturated with schools where we, we don't need the charter schools? Why don't we give incentives so that they would be at someplace where we actually would, would actually give benefit to us and not just benefit to them? That's my wackadoo suggestion, is have the Financial Advisor Committee just explore that suggestion.
Shirley.
I think the financial incentive would be for a charter school to look at what our district is and what our district needs are. I mean, if you were a smart enough charter school, you would want to be able to fill your school. And if you wanted to fill your school, you would think you would want to build it where there is a need. And, and I think that's something that charter schools were supposed to do from the beginning to fill a need. And so, well, that's why we haven't approved new charter schools in the last few years. So, I think when we have a charter school that comes forward and fills a need, and if they aren't looking at placing themselves there, then shame on them, because they haven't done their homework on what the needs of Sarasota County schools are. I don't think we need to incentivize it, but again, we're going, chasing moles or whatever. But I think any charter school worth its salt should be looking at where the need in our county is, and I think the onus is on them to look for that and, and, and to find it and try to meet our needs, rather than going out there to meet theirs.
Caroline.
I am not in favor incentivizing looking at helping charter schools establish themselves in Sarasota County, flat out. I'm not. I mean, we, we have enough problems trying to keep our money here in Sarasota to support the district schools. I'm not in favor of going out and trying to help. I hear you. I understand your reasoning. I'm not in favor of it.
But I think, and-
That is not what I said.
No, no, and I think if we're, I think as a strategic plan financially, which the Financial Advisory Board is there to help us, and Ben, I know the initial scope was looking at the value and the impact of the referendum, and you guys have been tremendous on looking, expanding well beyond that as the environment has changed. But I've been, I don't want to speak for you, but I know that there are other districts that have done various, especially in urban areas, that have done very exactly that because of the ability for them to build and operate at a much lower rate, instead of having the, the district having to, to find and borrow the dollars.
I just don't want Mrs. Zucker's words to go unchallenged. I did not say, nor was I even trying to imply, I actually said, this is not what I'm trying to say, when I said it. I am not saying that we should provide incentives for charter schools to come to Sarasota County. I just wanna make sure that's perfectly clear.
Okay. Again, we have-
I just wanna make sure it's perfectly clear.
The words around that said, business incentivizes.
Okay. Okay. I don't wanna go around, I'll go directly.
Pause, please.
I just wanna say directly, I am not suggesting that we incentivize charter schools to Sarasota County, period. I don't know how you can go around that, but that's what I'm saying.
On the record, no more. Yeah, very, okay, very clear. But I think as a, as we continue, another avenues of evaluating if we are to be looking at borrowing money or what, that there could be creative ways to look at alternative options with that. I think, let's move forward, unless there's, okay.
Looking at page 18, I believe, is kind of, what is the return on investment? There are a number of metrics here. I think, from our perspective as a Financial Advisory Committee, the school board and the school system has benefited enormously from the leadership that this group has provided, and our metrics are at or above at virtually every measure in the state of Florida, and we perform extremely well nationally as well. So, kudos to you all and to the, the leadership. The summary, I think, is pretty self-evident. The, the one thing that keeps coming up from our perspective is that 86% of a huge operating budget has to do with people. And we don't forget that, and we are very cognizant of that as we look forward. When we ask for people to come in and tell us how to save money, it is not how to cut heads, it is how do we save money otherwise.
Absolutely.
So, recently, we've expanded our committee to 11 members. I'm delighted. By the way, I would give kudos to two of our members who worked very hard on the referendum. Both Dan DeLeo and Pam Truitt are here. They don't miss meetings, and they were very helpful to the referendum effort, so thank you very much. I think, without further ado, we may be at a point where I'd be delighted to answer any questions.
I know we did some throughout the process. Are there any questions? Shirley.
I just wanna take the opportunity to thank all of you for your work, 'cause I know you do a lot of work and you get a lot of background information, so there's a lot of homework that y'all have to do before you get to your meetings. But I think it's this Financial Oversight Committee that, and frankly, I think you've gone even beyond what you were originally supposed to do. Not that I mind that. I think that's a good thing that you look other ways. I mean, you, I believe it was initially to look at the referendum, but now you're looking at the budget as a whole. And, and I think that helps to give our community a sense of assurance that we are using these dollars well, and that we are, there is somebody looking at us and how these dollars are being used. And, and I think Manatee County, that was one thing that, that I think helped them, is that they said they're gonna model us and have their own Financial Advisory Committee, which I definitely hope that they get as many strong and interested and dedicated people on that board as we have on ours. And thank you all so much for all your work.
Thank you for allowing us to do that work. We appreciate it.
Jane.
Well, I again wanna say thank you, because I know what effort you've put in, and thank you for your support of the referendum as, as well, John, because we really, we really appreciate all the efforts that everyone put in from the Financial Advisory Committee. On Tuesday, I got a call from a new citizen of Sarasota County who had just moved here from Connecticut and really didn't understand this whole issue and wanted to know about accountability. Unfortunately, when I called him back, he was voting, and I said, "Go outside, don't vote now, let me talk to you first." And so, he called me back after voting, and I still to this day do not know how he voted, but he, he-
He answered yesterday.
Well, but at any rate, he, he, he asked me about accountability, and I mentioned the Financial Advisory Committee. And so, I told him that we would be having this meeting on Thursday, it would be televised, and to tune in. So, if he's out there, I wanna give him a little acknowledgement, maybe today or at another time he'll watch, but he was very pleased to hear that we were having this session and we would be discussing this. And I think, yes, hopefully, Manatee will do the same thing, 'cause we're really excited that, that their referendum passed. But, but thank you all, because you do a great job, and we, we do notice and we do appreciate it. Thank you, Louis.
Shirley. And then Caroline.
I just wanted to say that, you know, if he's out there and would like to serve on the Financial Advisory Committee, or anybody that would like to serve, if they would send an application in or a resume in to the, the school district, care of the school board, we'll keep that, those, those names on file, and if there's ever another opening on the board or if people fall off, I mean, that would be, because we do look for good people, but it does, it's, it's a lot of time and a lot of homework, but you really get an understanding of how our schools run.
Just as a closing remark, my friend and colleague Murray Bluegrass, who lives on the Key, says that there are eight students enrolled from the Key, and 92% of the voters vote in favor of the referendum, so.
That's what I was trying to talk to someone the other day, to explain that to them, that they're highly educated voters, and they highly educated voters get it. They know the value of education, and therefore, they're willing to spend more to-
And they know that it translates into house value, so.
Yes, but we wouldn't have this credibility, this accountability if it weren't for you all.
Well, thank you.
So, thank you.
We appreciate it.
And that's, in closing, I know it's a, it's a volunteer position, and it's a, it's a heavy lift, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
And appreciate the time for, for sharing an update, and look forward to, as you know, we are going through the budget, so there may be additional requests for, for insight, since the scope of work has certainly expanded, as, as was said earlier. So, thank you so much.
We'll work as hard as we have to.
I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving to the next topic of 2018-19 budget, Mitzi and Krista.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we're here to discuss the operating budget, and I know you have a capital budget discussion right after us, so, numbers all morning.
Eric's favorite.
Yeah. So, in your read-ahead package that you received, was a 13-page kind of summary of the preliminary budget as it stands. One thing to note is that it's March, and for the first time, this is my 12th budget, for the first time, we now know what our revenues are, and we know what our personnel expenditures are gonna be. That's, that's never happened in 12 years, going into the new year, so that's, makes the crystal ball much clearer for us. We were, when we did negotiations, we believed that we would receive additional dollars, which technically we have from the BSA. We received 47 cents. The unfortunate part is, is that our district cost differential was reduced, so it nets to a $22.65 reduction per weighted FTE. Based on next year's weighted FTE, that's a $1,081 less, so that's unfortunate. However, in total, we did receive a 0.96%, or just under 1% increase in total funds, $76 a student. The majority of that is held in categorical items, safe schools. We received $1,004, predominantly for additional resource officers that we're planning on in our 22 elementary schools. We received, as Todd mentioned earlier, $1,048,000 for mental health allocation, which is currently sitting in contracted services. We're not sure how long this particular item may be funded, or if it'll be rolled into the base student allocation. So, for the initial year, the plan was to contract those services, rather than hire staff that would then continue with the district if we didn't have the funding beyond this So, for 1718, Krista, did you wanna give them an update of where we're at? I mean, there's not much change from the last time we amended the budget, other than the raises, but did you wanna kinda go through that?
Is that on?
Uh huh. No. Yep, there you go.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, there, there really wasn't much changes in the trending since the amended budget. You guys have the, this one that talks about the different changes. You can see the increase for the state funds for revenues was due to the best and brightest. Local funds, that decreased because we are anticipating having to pick up some of the IDEA costs, which is something that continues to happen. And then for transfers, we got less funding in PICO, so that's just a, a change there. For the appropriations, the salaries obviously have gone up due to the negotiations and benefits. Purchase services is just a small increase, but the charters went down after the third calculation where our entire enrollment went down, so theirs went down as well appropriately. Energy services are trending a little bit better, even though we had that increase in FPL, and materials are, you know, just up a little bit, capital outlay is a little bit. So, it's, it's pretty status quo, which is wonderful news for the projection. And that's it.
There you go. Very good. So, again, for 1819's revenues, they are, they are going up a little bit. The expenditure side, the, it's pretty status quo. You know, we've, we've got the raises built into that, and when you take the amount of revenue we're receiving, it's, there isn't really any room left for any additional changes. We have a reorganization within the Safety and Security Department, predominantly to handle all of the additional security needs in the district. That's a net cost of about, about 220, 225,000. We are absorbing seven reading recovery teachers that were previously paid for through the Beransik Foundation. That grant has ended. Their work is still needed, so that particular item is in there. Again, we have the raises. And we have one additional Title I school. And with the changes and the funding formulas, or the staffing formulas we use with Title I and within the contract, Title I aides are paraprofessionals, so they're a little more expensive. That's about a $40,000 adjustment, and we have a homeschool liaison at every Title I school, so Garden will now have a homeschool liaison, which is, so it's about a $110,000 increase to the general fund on that particular item. One thing to note, though, is all of our Title I schools that are at 90% or higher free and reduced are retaining their same level of funding. So, even though we've added another Title I school, the ones that are over 90% are not being impacted with their title dollars. And the only other new thing that was part of the budget this year was Schools of Excellence, which we've all spoken about previously. We met with our principals last Friday?
Friday.
Friday, and went through the budget documents with them. This was our best estimate. We worked with facilities, transportation, and IT on what their direct services are to the schools for what they would bill, and we took the 1617, audited actibles, and applied the raises to those, to just estimate what their actual expenditures would be. Normally, the principals don't pay attention to things like their utility bills, the insurance for their facilities, the mowing of their lawns, the internet coming into their schools. All of these things are not things that they deal with on a day-to-day basis. So, we provided them all of that. Based on the 90% funding, every school was over 90%. We knew that Eric had a concern about whether or not the Title I schools would be adversely impacted by Schools of Excellence, so Dr. Bowden asked the Budget Office to prepare one for every single school in the district, which was a major task for those guys. And, of course, we modified it and changed it a few different ways. From Sunday, had transportation, had to go back and look at every route and cost every route out and, and bring those in, because again, a route may be three schools, only, you know, so they have to break out the cost of each school, and, but they, they did it all, and, I mean, kudos to all of them. And so, we did find that every school was receiving more than their 90% earned revenue from the FEFP and referendum dollars. So, when we met with them, we asked them if they wanted to exercise their principal autonomy and prepare their own budgets. And we also had a forum where they could opt out, and all 19, all 19 of our Schools of Excellence principals have opted out and are just wanting us to do the personnel allocations and their budgeting as we've done in the past. So, so that was their decision, and so we're going forward with that.
But they will still have the traditional waiver process at their disposal. So, when you say that we are staffing their schools, we'll do an initial staffing allocation, but then they have the ability to move within those under our waiver process.
Right. And at this particular, that's correct. So, they can, they can take a teaching unit that they believe is better served by two paraprofessionals, or however they wish to do it, as long as they stay within their allocations of personnel.
Shirley.
And my understanding is that you didn't include any grant funding in, in these dollars. In my understanding is that you didn't include any grant funding in these dollars. These were just the dollars that are flowing through us, through the
FEFP and the referendum. Correct.
So, well, and also, you wouldn't have included any money that their PTAs raise either.
Correct.
So, those numbers aren't on here.
Correct.
So, there might, there might be additional operating dollars. Because I know at one time, I believe Southside funded, you know, a dance teacher or something. Well, that, and I would imagine that Pineview funds something with their extra dollars. So, there are some other things that are not on here that these different schools do.
So, the revenues nor the expenditures are included in these dollars that you're seeing here. So, we have projects that we assign. So, schools have childcare programs. So, they'll use some of those childcare programs to do tutoring for their students after school or whatever. Those particular expenditures are also aligned to that revenue source. And those full projects were not included in this analysis.
What about the summer learning academies?
Did we include those? I believe we did. Because they were funded with general revenue this past year.
Summer learning academies have also grant funds that flow. So, that would not have been included, but our portion of the funding that went to summer learning academies.
Right. The day program, the enhancement, the enhancement portion, or the after 1:30 part of their day is in a grant. So, that's outside of the scope of these dollars.
Jane.
Speaking about summer learning academies, we did receive some money from the legislature. So, that money would go to expansion.
Correct. $500,000.
And where will we be expanding? To all of our Title I?
Seven.
Yes, we'll be at, yeah, we're going from four to 11 this summer.
This summer.
Correct. That will not be 11 sites. Some of the sites have opted to partner together, but will serve 11 schools.
Great.
Correct. There are 11 schools that are serving, entering kindergarten and entering first for the seven schools. Gocio, Tuttle, and Emma are entering K1 and 2, because this is their third year of summer learning this summer. And AltaVista will retain their K through 3 program.
I would also, and not today or at this minute, but I would also like to know how much money we have lost. And I spoke to the superintendent about this. I'd like to know exactly how much money we have lost with the required local effort rollback over the years that we've done that.
I can calculate that for you.
Yeah, I'm just going to preface this. I've been very busy with tax season, so I really didn't, I just, you know, looked at this. But I just want to make sure, I'm sorry?
I'm so glad.
So, I just want to make sure that, I read this, and I may not have, you know, got it as well as you. I would have thought that when I would have seen this document, I would have seen you allocated all the operating dollars, split them out to the schools, because that's where the money needs to go. And then, you took 10% off the top to handle the landings and administrative, the superintendent, you know, the stuff that's not direct support. And then, the school district would, the school would in turn subcontract out for the services that they need. What it looks like to me, correct me if I'm wrong, what happened was, there was money allocated to the landings administration, and then, money was allocated to the schools. And then, from that money, 10% was withheld. I mean, if I add up all these numbers, will I get the total operating budget for the school district?
No, because it doesn't include monies that go to our charter schools. It doesn't include course fees, workforce development dollars. I mean, you're not going to see the whole general fund in this.
So, for example, the operating dollars that take for the board, our board?
They are not, they are not prorated out to individual school sites, finance, HR, curriculum and instruction, my office.
But was that, no, I'm asking, was that number taken off before the number was distributed out through the schools? Or is that included in the 10%?
Those are separate, independent cost centers that were not contemplated in this exercise.
And that's my issue.
But why? Yeah, why?
Why?
Okay. So, let me explain.
I would think that those would be part of the 10%.
They are part of the 10%. You are correct.
The number much less than 10%.
But, yes, the administration is much less than 10%. So, the way that the law is written is you can withhold 10% of the FEFP funding. So, if you look at the funding worksheets, you'll see every single line item of the FEFP. And what we did was plug in, they're either unweighted or weighted FTE, depending upon how that funding is distributed to the school districts. So, each school's unweighted or weighted student enrollment was included in there. And then, they earn their proportionate share of the revenue for every single one. So, we calculated everyone out at 100% based on the students they're serving, and then, multiplied that by 90%, and that's the revenue they are entitled to receive. And then, we applied their 1617 expenditures, adjusted for salary increases. And then, the subcontracting that's being done is being done through facilities, provided a rate for their direct services for custodial and landscaping, that not really maintenance, maintenance so much. Because if it's a maintenance item, it's coming from the capital dollar transfer. So, those are not included.
But Mitzi, my question is, if I add up all these numbers,
Correct.
And I take out the grants and the charters and the pass-through, will I get to our total operating budget?
No, because it's not the total operating budget. Our total general fund operating budget includes the STC adult education components. You have course fees, workforce development dollars. You have rental income that comes in to cover the cost of electricity. You have, I'm trying to think of some other things. We get racetrack revenues that come in.
So, you're not separating out like people support services, finance? None of those other departments are being separated out before you divvy up the money?
No. The only thing that's being charged to the schools are their direct expenditures, direct services provided to the schools. Anything that's indirect is part of that 10%.
Okay. All right. That was my question.
Correct.
My next question is
That's our understanding.
Hold on, real quick, because I just want to make sure I clarify. So, I get the ones that were pulled out. But you're saying, so, HR, people support, well, HR, people support services
From the landings, I'll just
Are not included, they're still remain central?
People support services that are indirect. If there are PTs, OTs, speech-language pathologists, they're charged directly to the schools that they're serving already. So, those dollars are included because they're serving those students. Those, that's a direct expenditure of the school. But Sonia's office is an indirect expenditure. That's not included. That's part of the 10%. My office to pay the employees, pay the bills of the schools, that's an, do the budget. That's indirect. HR to hire employees, that's an indirect cost.
Okay.
You guys are indirect.
But we didn't assign that cost. I mean, in cost accounting, you could prorate it out and say, we're charging $15 per student for indirect services. We did not cost out indirect services. What we did is, we took the revenue generated by a site and compared it to their expenditures, looking to see if we met a 90% threshold. You could do the same exercise with non-school cost centers, but they don't generate revenue. And so, if you did that with the HR cost center, you'd have revenue of zero, and then, you'd have their expenditure because as a district, we're funded on a per-student allocation, and there's no service of students through a number of our cost centers.
Correct. Understood. Jane, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you had your hand up. Oh, Shirley and then Eric.
I think a number that Eric wants to get to is, what is the total FEFP? Not the total general revenue. The total FEFP that we're getting from the state. And I kind of know how to read these. And I can't tell you what it is when I look at what we're getting here. Because, and I would like to see the reality of what we get versus what it says here. Because it says here that the total potential funds is $346.8 million. I don't think we got that, though. I don't know what, how much we're getting from the state. I would like to see how those numbers line up, you know, because are we getting the total? Where can I look to compare this year to last year with what the state is giving us? And how that district cost differential? Because, I mean, they'll, they'll give me the potential, they'll compare this to last year. But they won't tell me what the actual funding is compared this year to last year. I don't know if you're following what I'm saying.
FEFP?
In the FEFP formula. I would like to see, and I don't know if anybody else would, an explanation of what they give us and they tell us versus what we really have as compared to last year. Did they really increase our funding like it says there? Because it's not really the funding, it's the total potential funding. And so, what was the actual funding? Because when you get to page 46 of there, it says the gross state and local FEFP times 90% was $226 million. I mean, so, the gross state and local was $251. So, how did they get $251 million here? But then, it says over here, the potential funding was $339 million. What's, what's the difference? And I don't understand how we get from that to there.
She's talking about the FEFP.
I'm talking about the FEFP run. And I'm trying to understand, when you say, we got $0.47, but that was everybody under the base. How does it compare to us? Because what did it do when that DCD was lowered? And how do the numbers that we get this year compare to what we have last year? And I know it can get complicated, but didn't you used to teach FEFP?
Sure. But the district cost differential is baked into the FEFP. And so, to isolate the impact of a component of the FEFP, the total yield, you could allocate out, and you would have to do that in arrears. This is a projection, so all of it is potential funding. But yes, you could do a study in arrears and say, what was the exact earnings per school site? And compare it to a projection. We do that through a number of exercises where we project budgets and then, do actuals and close out at the end of the year. But the components of the FEFP generate a required state and local effort. Then, they subtract out that we're limited in our required local effort compared to other districts, because we're property-rich. But the yield, what you see there, what they say potential? I mean, you could get to the end of it. That's the funding that we build budgets around, but you have to go earn it. And so, one of the issues we had this year was student counts. It is a FTE-driven system. It is direct funding, whereas others do rolling averages. And so, you have to factor in not just total funding, but you have to factor in enrollment. But items like DCD, required local effort, those items are baked into the formula. You could do some things to isolate what would happen if they didn't roll back the rate, and we use year-over-year the same required local effort. Those are certainly activities and things that you could do. But when you say potential funding, that's their projection.
That's true. The potential funding is based upon the enrollment numbers that the state legislature used for our school district. So, those are our potential funding.
And I know when the legislature and the governor and the legislators go out and say, we funded schools by $484 million more, they're looking at the potential funding, not some of these other items. And I'd like to be able to compare what we got this year to what we got last year. And this really doesn't
Oh, in the, in the full FEFP, it's only in the current? I have a comparison for you. So, the statewide average, it's, was it 110? I'm not sure exactly. I've got it here somewhere.
Yeah. I'd like a breakdown on what caused the changes.
Yeah. Ours was 7626 based upon our October FTE, because we don't have the data back from the state yet on the February FTE. So, a comparison between what the conference report states and what we have, I have available here. I can provide that to you. That's really easy. And then, you know, so when you look at it, it looks like we're going to get $885,000. Now, we're also serving 460 more students. So, it's not necessarily an equal, like, oh, we got $850,000 more dollars. Well, but on a per-student basis, that's not correct. Because when you multiply the base student allocation times the DCD, it's actually $22.65 less, which is actually $1 million and over $1 million less.
Yeah, like, if you could take that total new dollars that we received, the total new dollars we received, and there's this many more new students, and some of them will be ours, and some of them are in the charter schools, take that times whatever the, you know, BSA or weighted F, and deduct that amount, and then, deduct those special accounts that they've given us for the security and for the mental health. What does that number come to?
Right. Well, in total, it's $76.26, of which $66.08 is coming from the .748 discretionary millage, because that was not rolled back. So, so that is
It wasn't totally rolled back. It was rolled back some.
The discretionary, no, the, not the required local effort, the discretionary, the .748.
That always stays that.
That one kind of stays the same, because the rate stays the same. So, so, but yeah, we, I can get you that information. And then, we can go back and also do the RLE adjustments.
Sure. So, when we teach the formula, you run it to what they call base. And so, you take your enrollment, you do program cost factors, and you do the base student allocation, and then, you subtract out required local effort. But before you do that, you get a, what the state calls your total need. You subtract out your required local effort. And then, you get a number of categoricals. What you would find this year is that base funding has decreased. That's the $22 that she talked about. And so, you would see on a per-student basis, a net decrease of $22 in the base. And that's really the discretionary funding that the district has available to them. Then, you could go by categorical, and you would see an increase of, well, about $98. If we're up 76 plus 22, you'd be plus $98 in all of your categoricals to show a net of $76 increase. But base funding is down on a per-student basis, where categoricals are up. If you wanted to continue to play out that activity, then you would talk about the mandates that accompanied each one of those, because the mandates that accompany particular safe schools outstretch it, which means it puts additional pressure back up on the base, because that's the only place you have. And so, the net effect of safe schools legislation is a decrease in base funding, because that has to be done by law. So, you would see that not only are we $22 in the hole on base student, that we're having to allocate base dollars to meet a mandate of a categorical that is unfunded.
Which we have been doing previous, in previous
Yeah. That's, that's kind of the number I want to know.
We can do that. Be careful what you wish for.
Eric.
Two things. First, I mean, base student allocation is going up.
Yep.
Right? Period. My, my question is
Wait, wait, I want to make that very, is it going up? Period? Yes?
47%.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to make sure we got that. So, and I'm asking this question, just a general question, and I, just to be consistent in how I've been as a school board member. This is not meant to be a comment about the actual program we asked the question about. So, we're going to continue reading recovery. We're going to take over the seven schools, seven teachers. My question is, is what evaluation did you use to determine that this is a program that you wanted to continue to use? And did you, did you, was this evaluation that you used, was that created in the past? Or was it created at the time when you made the decision whether to continue internally or not?
Both. So, this is an ongoing implementation. We added six reading recovery teachers last year and made the commitment for this seven. And the Baransik Foundation agreed to build a bridge back into the 1718 budget. But to fully evaluate the reading recovery program, they've done independent measures and find that it's highly effective, not only within the school district of Sarasota, but on a national implementation. But you'll see the impact of it this year. And so, we are anxious to see third-grade FSA results to show if that effect sustains itself. But the answer is both, but we're not to that final assessment point, because those students are just now reaching the state assessment program.
So, how much do you expect third-grade reading to go up because of reading recovery? And please, I'd like to know that before we get the results.
I expect 80% of the students who participated in reading recovery to perform at grade level. And so, it is on a per-student, is if those students who had the benefit of reading recovery, the national average is, I'm trying to make eye contact with Laura, is like 76. But we have outperformed that here in Sarasota. But our expectation is that when those students, and so, what we would provide to you is the number of the students who had the benefit of reading recovery, those students who are reading on grade level, and to compare that percentage to the national average of 76. But our predicted score is at least 80%.
And you're going to be able to provide this data to us? I mean, it's, it's ability, you have the ability to go granular in July or August to be able to tell us that those numbers? What percentage of the people who participate in reading recovery are at grade level?
I can give you a roster of individual school
I don't want, I don't want individual
But yes, absolutely. When you say granual, yes, you can't get any deeper than I can put a name on it.
I wasn't trying to imply that I wanted student names. I was just want to make sure that you have the ability to get the data.
How deep can I get? I can get to the student name. I can aggregate at both the school and district level.
Okay.
And intend to do that for you.
All right. Thank you.
Back to you.
So, I guess the only other thing I wanted to let you know was on your afternoon meeting agenda, you have a new business item that would authorize us to release these budgets to schools and departments
to schools and departments for them to start working on their budgets, and for them to review their staffing allocations, to review what they need, so that we can get the staffing process underway. The sooner we can get jobs posted, the sooner we can get to the best candidates and get our school staff for next year.
I just have a quick question on that, because I know we, I know there was a previous workshop on the timeframe as we prepared for Schools of Excellence. And so what we're approving this afternoon is to release those, and then the timeframe for them to turn that back is when?
In April?
April 6th. And we are on spring break, so-
Right.
Well, I'm not, I don't go anywhere, but spring break is-
We understand it's spring break, but the principals have actually expressed a desire to have the information sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
And they, because they are also the ones who would prefer that we start staffing a week earlier than we had originally planned.
Okay.
So that they can get their schools staffed.
Okay. And is that, but is, I know we'd, in the past, have not had that quick of a turnaround. Is that correct?
No, that's pretty typical, is that they receive staffing allocations, they'll do a waiver process, they'll work with their school advisory committees, but typically it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Within a week?
We allow extra time for places like the Technical College, who have a little bit more deliberate of a process, but I don't know that we've ever done it at a week, but it's typically two weeks.
Usually a few more days, to your point.
Yeah.
But everything is pretty much status quo because of the enrollment. And again, like Missy said, they express desire to have that kind of, they want us to meet a deadline to be able to get, start interviewing by a certain timeframe. And the only way we could do that is to do that. So it's kind of like everybody had to give a little bit. Right. Well, no, and I know earlier the better to prepare for the following year for sure.
And they were kind of taking their whole summer timeline into consideration.
And we also give grace if there's someone who's taking a little longer. Obviously, you know, we work with them, so.
Yeah. They turn them in, we turn them around, so.
Okay, okay. Danielle?
Shirley?
Are we going into the 2018-19 budget, or have you done that?
That was pretty much what I-
What you did. Well-
No, well, were you meaning, I mean, so the summary, we got through, but I know that as we prepared to move to the 18-19 budget, and I'm not sure if that's what you were saying, there are a lot of additional discussions. So that's why we have 90 minutes on the table, so I don't think we're done.
Yeah, I was still on page three, I mean, where we, that's where I thought we were.
We can go through the document, sure. So, so again, for 18-19, you know, the revenues for the FEFP are prepared based upon the conference report that came out, which we've been discussing. The capital transfer was increased because we are now by law allowed to cover the costs of software licenses. Pretty much most software is by licensing anymore, so the legislature has changed that so that you can use capital dollars to cover that expenditure. So we are doing that. Salaries were prepared-
How much is that, software licenses and the-
What, did you, we have a million?
Oh, we added 1.35.
Thank you.
And then salaries were increased based upon the negotiations. As you are aware, longevity's been eliminated and rolled into base salaries now. Positions are relatively status quo, and other than, again, the Garden Elementary and the Safety and Security Department, benefits, our group health plan is performing phenomenally and has been for about the last eight months, nine months. So I've spoken with Lynn Peterson, and we both believe that we can probably go next year without an increase in our health insurance benefits, so, which is good for everybody. We're very confident that there will be more than enough reserves in fund balance. Look at you with your smile. So, and then also workers' compensation, that, you know, we're self-insured on workers' comp. That fund balance has grown pretty large, over and above the reserve requirements. We have about a year and a half to two years' worth of revenue sitting in fund balance, so we're going to reduce that rate for next year. Because again, we don't need to be putting money out of the general fund into a self-insurance fund that's just going to sit there for no reason. So that rate is being reduced from 1% to .1%. We also did that during the recession for a little while to help the general fund along this, and then when we went back to 1%, we've built up quite the reserve again, so.
So we're moving from 1% to .1%?
Point one. Purchase services, the charter school flow-throughs are increased based upon their projected student enrollment.
Can I stop? Just, I have a question, and if I miss this, as far as, since we're talking about employee benefits, is there an update on the Blue Cross Blue Shield? And that's, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I just know-
That's not really underneath me anymore, so I have not really followed it as closely.
Okay.
But Lynn did send me an email, which, of course, I don't have my phone with me. But it was my understanding that they thought they were going to come to an agreement.
April 1st was my understanding, but, so, okay, I'll follow up separately. Sorry.
Yeah, I believe that's true.
That's the will of the board during superintendent's report. I could certainly have Roy and/or Lynn come and provide an update.
And it's not unique, but for everyone watching, it is not just Sarasota County schools, it is everywhere, yes.
The formal meeting, and we'll do it under the superintendent's report.
Please, yeah, Shirley.
And I don't know if this is the time to talk about it or when you're done, but that purchased services is basically a lot of the new money that we received, the safe school allocation and the mental health allocation. How are we going to use that? What are we going to do with that? And I know the sheriff has been sending us letters wanting an answer. Do we stop and talk about that now, or do you want her to finish and come back and talk about it? Because I think we need to talk about it.
It has to happen, so you want to have the conversation now, or do you want to finish the-
Seize the moment.
Okay. So what we asked the Budget Office to do was to build into each school-level budget a allocation of $66,150. The decision that we made was on the $1.4 million. It was very specific that it was to pay for school resource officers above and beyond the headcount that we have in the 17-18 school year. So it cannot be used to supplant our existing SRO program. And so what we did was we allocated those funds to charter schools as required by law. And so 15%, 16% of those dollars will then be allocated out. They will be a categorical. They can only be used for school resource officers at charter schools. It will be interesting to see how they treat those dollars, because it will be in their budgets. But if they elected not to hire an SRO, then they can't use those dollars, but those dollars don't revert back to us, so they just will-
How much is going, how much is going to the charter schools for the safe schools?
15% of $1.4 million.
Okay, and it's based on a per-student allocation?
Correct.
However, you're saying that was not their mandate prior to, they are now required to?
Well, they're not, no one is mandated to hire additional school resource officers. We have a, we are mandated to provide a level of security, and we're provided a funding source should we choose to use school resource officers. But if you decided to form your own police force or do a guardian program, then you would not be able to use these dollars to fund those efforts. And so these dollars were specific to hiring additional school resource officers. And so we are, there was nothing that exempted these funds to be prorated out on a per-student basis to charter schools, so they get their proportionate share, which leaves us with about 85%, 84% of $1.4 million that if we so chose to expand our school resource officer program, we could use those dollars. Just one second, let me finish a thought. And so our decision was to then allocate those dollars out to the 21 sites, the 21 elementary schools that do not currently have an SRO. Now I'll pause, take some questions, and then talk about our conversations with the sheriff to craft a program that is more cost-effective than our traditional SRO program, but allows us to use this particular funding source. But I'll pause now for questions.
Eric.
First, I want to thank the sheriff for all the stuff that he's been doing in this, in the, in the support that he's been giving to the school district during this troubled time. But you keep using the word "school resource officer," and I know the sheriff has given us a variety of options, and I'm probably messing this up, was it SD2 or-
SD1, SD2.
SD2. Does that count as a school resource officer? It does. Okay. I paused here, but that's where we're going next. That's the program that I spoke of, that he has crafted specifically. It's pretty creative. It keeps the cost down for us. But I just wanted to stop and talk about revenue before we talk about- The sheriff has gone beyond his way to be creative, to try to, you know, create cost savings for the district. So it's a great partnership, that, this level of service he's providing to us.
Agreed. So if the-
Ms. Brown?
Go ahead, Ms. Brown. Shirley.
It might be too early to even have these answers also, but have, I mean, in the past, haven't the, hasn't the county split 50-50 these costs?
In our existing school resource officer program, we share equally in that program. So that program is about a $1.5 million program, of which we shared equally in it. It provided 14 officers, 11 school resource officers, two sergeants, and a lieutenant that were made up that unit that served those 10 schools with two deputies.
And then we also had the cities of Sarasota, Northport, and Venice helped us cover the cost. And I would imagine that we could build our budgets around that if they would continue to do that. But, I mean, I would think that we don't have those answers yet because they don't have those answers yet. But are we going to ask those cities and counties to share in those costs like they have with the other resource officers?
Can I walk up to that?
I was gonna say, let me, yeah, I would like that, because do we have a breakdown of what our current funding structure is, as it relates to school resource officers? I know we've had it in the past, but did you provide anything as far as an update since this?
No, I have it, but I can, do you have the ability to copy here?
Can, I think that would, would that help the board to see the financial, what we have now and where we're going?
No, it's in my head, I don't need it.
A minute.
Thank you. Can we get a, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, well, even if we have to, you know, look at that, I mean, I would be happy to give up my spot in the afternoon to go further into this.
Right.
This is what I want to talk about is-
The time set, of course, absolutely.
Is what are the situations and what are the scenarios of how much it's going to cost us? And if we've had any preliminary discussions yet with the cities in the county about cost sharing.
Yeah, I think if we are going to look at, instead, we have to make, we have to make a decision now, and I know that there is a solution for this school year, and I'm very appreciative of the partnerships that we have that were willing to step up and help us to achieve compliance. But as we look at 18-19, I know that there are a lot of, there's some variation of options, but they have funding implications. So if we can see what that looks like before we get into the sharing, or what was and what could be, I think it would be helpful. So I don't know if we want to take a break, or if there are additional questions before we go down that road, or?
I can talk in general terms, and then we can put numbers to it, just so we kind of develop a common vocabulary.
Yeah, I understand that SD turned into SRD 1 and 2.
Sure. So if you look at our current school resource officer program, you would call that our SRD 1 program. Those are year-round deputies that are assigned to our school sites. They perform another, a number of other functions, you know, over winter breaks, spring break, during the summer. But those are typically career, service, law enforcement who have experience. Typically, they're not new deputies to the sheriff's office. They've been on patrol five or six years. It's pretty competitive. They apply to the school resource officer program and get assigned into our schools. And so that is the school resource officer 1 program. They are at 10 schools currently, providing 11 officers. We have two officers at Riverview High School.
You said they're year-round? I mean, you mean school year-round, or are you talking about they're there through the summer, too?
No, they are, they are full-time employees of the sheriff's department.
They're full-time of the sheriff's, but how often do we keep, or we pay for them year-round?
Well, we'll get to the cost considerations when I can give you the handout, but we share equally in their salaries. They're assigned to our schools for the 180 days of school. They do training in the summer to get ready, but then the sheriff uses them for a variety of other tasks during the summer, during spring break, on patrols. They have vacation time that they really try to get them to use, not during the 180 days of school. But they are full-time employees of the sheriff's department. They work 52 weeks a year. We pay half their salary. It's in the mid-50s. I don't have my handout because they're making copies of it. The SRD 2 program that the sheriff has proposed is that he hired deputies specific to the school district, that they would not be typically career, service deputies, but they would be hired to serve our schools 180 days of year with enough training days and holidays. So it would probably be 190-day contract with an officer. Typically, it would be either someone new to the law enforcement career, or those who had retired from another agency and retired here to Sarasota. But they would be employees of the school district.